To apply by United States of America and to your republic, the word stands for nation.
We'll move to item three on our agenda. And I am going to make a motion to amend our agenda to add executive session right immediately at the start of our meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Adi. Is there a discussion? Without discussion, I have a motion in a second. Mr. Zink?
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Adi? Yes. Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
We're going to recess into executive session and we will rejoin you when executive session is completed. Yeah. I call this meeting back into order. And I need to humbly ask for the board's forgiveness because I did not state a reason for going into executive session. We've had no substantive discussion, but we're going to correct that oversight on my part. I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of considering the employment of a public employee pursuant to Ohio Advice Code 121.22. May I have a second to my motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Adi. Discussion? Please call the roll yet again.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
We'll return.
Thank you.
All right, I'll take a motion to move us out of executive session.
So moved.
Second, thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Mr. Zink.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Adi.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. I have no further comments this evening. We'll move straight to administrative report. Policy update, Mr. Vogelmann.
Just a quick update.
You're just being a little far away from the mic there, Mr. Vogelmann.
No.
It's not on.
We have somebody coming.
Karen is coming.
Here comes our tech guy. Do you just want to take it up?
All right, how about now? Just three quick points to make this morning, this morning. How about tonight? Seems like we've been here all night. As I mentioned in our last policy meeting a couple of months ago, that Niola always does a couple of updates every year, and they have released their fall update is out, and I've been in contact with our Niola rep, Norm Burkhardt. And what I will do kind of following for committee work, I'll meet with Norm to go over the fall update, and then I'll bring that back for committee after we meet, trying to look early October to line up with Norm's schedule. So then after I meet with Norm, then when the policy committee meets again, we'll go over the update. Just a quick snapshot of the update deals with 21 different policies. But really, it's about 15 topics because it's one of those where if you change in one policy, it could affect three other policies. Nothing's pressing on time. A lot of it deals with legislation that is now in place that was passed earlier in the year, such as the safety bills. And so now it's catching up with the policy language, nothing that we're out of compliance with, but just catching up and making sure we're current with House Bill and Senate Bill language. So that's one part. Second part has also been requested that I research any policies with our Niola clients dealing with House Bill 61 and Senate Bill 132, the Fairness and Sports Act, to kind of get that into our pipeline to start looking to see if there's any sample policies out there, depending on what happens at Columbus, just to have it ready because we talked about that before, that that policy was kind of put on hold. Take a look at that, see what happens, but start researching to see what may be out there now to kind of start laying that foundation for whatever we may want to do in the future. And then thirdly, also looking at how to navigate kind of how we work with student groups and political affiliations. You know, we always talk about, you know, do your civic duty and vote. So we put up a sign that says, don't forget to vote, but then we put a certain party on the bottom, brought to you by, you know, we want to stay away from that. So trying to navigate those waters of how do we work with that and not overstep our bounds in promoting one political party over another? And just try and research if there's any policy out there about how the best way to handle those situations if they would arise. We don't have any situations like that, but kind of given how things have been going in the world lately, we want to be out in front of it and make sure that we don't put our students or our advisors or adults in a position where they have to defend themselves or do something that they have to ask for forgiveness for in hindsight. So those are the three main things in policy that we're looking at moving forward. So any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Vogelmann. Next is our back to school update that I wanted to share with the board. We kicked off the school year with a We Choose Lakota theme to celebrate all the difference reasons our students, staff, and parents choose Lakota as a place to work and live. We did a thought exchange this summer and got over 500 responses about why people choose Lakota. We are also excited that enrollment continues to go up. So as of this morning, we were at 17,364 students, which is about 247 more than we were this time last year. And if you look back, our trajectory has gone up. So by way of comparison, five years ago, we were at 16,203. So that's an increase of 1,161 students in a five-year period, which says people are coming to Lakota for all the right reasons. So I wanted to mention that. We started the year once again with a staggered start. We've heard a lot of good feedback about that from most, most people, just about easing back into the transition. We also started Lakota Central. We had a lot of discussion about that. That was essentially taking our academy and expanding it a little bit. So we have what used to be the board office in the Wakini Building still in use, but we've also refurbished a part of Lakota West Freshman Building for the students. And it's almost, and we have kids going back and forth across the parking lot supervised, of course. And some of the thought today was the Wakini Building, the board, old board office, sort of the humanities wing, and the Lakota West Freshman Building is sort of the science and math and STEM part. So we're able to accommodate a lot of different student needs. We have 210 students that are being served right now by Lakota Central. It used to be prior to this year, we had a cap at 170, so we don't have the cap right now. But you know, it's basically space dependent, but I appreciate the leadership of everybody involved with that. And it's another step forward with our personalized learning initiatives. I would be remiss if I did not mention our massive need for bus drivers still. So currently, there's a sign-on bonus and paid training for bus drivers being offered by our partners at Peterman. So I would again encourage that. Also, in terms of communication, this school year, we have a new website and mobile app, including final forms for our parents to use, and they can update that easily every single year. And we have about 83% of our student body is registered and logged in and ready to go with final forms. So I wanted to mention that as well. I think I'll leave master facilities plan out of this update. We've kind of hit that a lot. I do want to mention our safety and security grant from Governor DeWine. We have $50,000. I think we mentioned it at the last board meeting, but $50,000 per building. And that's one of our top priorities. So we're continuing to work with our resource officers to identify areas of improvement for safety and security for our district. I'm going to mention some finance things. So Adam, if I say anything wrong, please correct me. But we did talk about, we have been working with the treasurer's office under Adam's leadership in terms of the fiscal outlook. We ended fiscal year '22 in much better financial shape than originally anticipated. And we have, look at them listening, we have 10 years of a balanced budget. We're not forecasting an operating levy in the near future.
That's correct, and it's very, very exciting to have a 10th year of a balanced budget. That was something that we'd worked real hard for and really, really happy about that.
I do want to mention that Lakota Outreach Diversity and Inclusion Department is ensuring we meet the needs of all of our students at Lakota, all of our students. And that work includes more than just in terms of race, but it's also students with disabilities and ESL learners and economically disadvantaged and even gifted learners. I wanted to mention that. Couple of things under mental health for our district. We continue to have an investment in our therapy dogs. We now have 10 therapy dogs at Lakota School, so provides a sense of comfort and relief for our students and staff, especially those suffering from anxiety. And we are in our sixth year in Hope Squad, so our peer-to-peer suicide prevention program. And we continue to work with them, but we also have extended that down to sources of strength for our students in grades seven and eight. And so my kudos to the staff for making those adjustments for all of our kids. So I just wanted to give sort of a overview of things as we head back to school, but part of the work that our staff and teachers have done to get ready. Be glad to take any general questions, if any.
Questions, board, comments? I'm going to ask the dreaded question with the increase in enrollment, how are the class size numbers?
So far, so good. Let me just, before I say that, but you know, kindergarten is a little bit tough. We have a bubble right now that is in our freshman grade. That's the biggest group we have right now, about 1,500 in that grade. The rest are between 1,200 and 1,400. Kindergarten numbers are probably a little down right now, but they're still coming in. We still have people that are making appointments for the enrollment center, but I have not heard any big red flags we've been able to address. We've had to add a couple of teachers late just because of the high numbers, but the board, you know, approved our ratios and sort of, we made it a little bit lower. So I think that helps as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
Questions? You may not have this information tonight, but do you have how our enrollment numbers currently compare to what the demographic study had predicted we would be currently?
If I remember, I think we're up versus a demographer and what he had come up with. So I haven't done a side-by-side comparison, but I'm pretty sure that we're up. I said ninth grade was the highest, it's 10th grade, I'm sorry. 10th grade is 1,500 right now. And then lowest class is currently kindergarten.
Didn't the demographic study say that at the end of 10 years, which we had that study in 2018, that the end of 10 years would be at 17,000 students?
That sounds right, maybe it was 17.5.
Yeah, I can't remember.
Somewhere, somewhere in the 17s.
We've already exceeded.
Yep, so.
I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Mrs. Bodie.
Can you describe, Matt, the process for registering for kindergarteners? And are there any opportunities there that we have heard that would make it easier? Is it like a three-week-long process, or can you describe that for me?
Sure.
Actually, Matt, let me jump in there. I was going to bring this up. Mr. Zink and I have been talking about this for the last two weeks. So Matt, when you get done, I'd like Adam to also talk about some ways for improvement that you've been thinking about.
Actually, we've, from Monday to today, they've enrolled 210 students. We have four people in our enrollment center that work through these appointments. What happens is as parents go online and they enroll, then they have these appointments to where they go in and they review the information versus the old way of you would have to come in and do that from the beginning. So we've been having the enrollment center staff work as much overtime as possible. I think we have 126, I got that number as I left the office today, 126 appointments that they still have with, I believe it was about 60% of those were individuals, and then about 40% of those were multifamily. So they had more than one kid. It's, it's just tricky with, you know, do they, do they possibly have more information that they need? Or is everything already turned in? So, you know, they, they just work through that as quickly as they possibly can, and we're really trying to get that moving as fast as possible.
And I'd like to add some of the things that Mr. Zink and I talked about were actually cross-training in his office so that some of them, when some of the staff could go over and assist during those really busy times. It's not a constant need for additional staff. It's just that couple of weeks before school starts. So I appreciate that you've been thinking out of the box, Mr. Zink, on that.
Yeah, that and, and really trying to emphasize when we do the kindergarten enrollments and things like that, you know, to get them in, get them enrolled, don't wait till the last minute if at all possible. That really helps to smooth that out so that everybody can get off the ground at the first of the school year.
And the staff at the enrollment center puts in longer hours, obviously, right now. So it's not like they're stopping when they usually do say, you know, in there or earlier, they are extending their hours to accommodate as many families as they can. But it seems like sometimes people seem to wait till the last minute, and they're unaware that it's going to take them long, where we put the call out for kindergarten screenings and, and things like that.
So I think there are places to continue to look for ways to improve.
Always trying to improve processes, for sure.
Yes.
So do we, sorry, I wasn't, do we communicate in advance with the community about? I'm sure we do, but what communications do we have regarding how early enrollment and how long it might possibly take to enroll? So, so parents don't wait till the last minute.
Sure. So aside from our normal communication channels of emails and social media and things like that, we do, we are in contact with preschools and daycare centers and our own schools, because sometimes it's the siblings coming up that are coming up. So we do reach out to those groups as well.
They've even held open houses. I, I believe the process actually kind of begins in February. They'll have open houses in the different early childhood buildings to get out to the communities.
So I have a question for you, Matt.
Sure.
Okay, that's increase in enrollment, just what
Okay, that's increase in enrollment, just what we want. And, um, I want to know if there's anything you did, the school district did different, that led, lead to the increase or spike in enrollment or that are more communities moving into the, the district?
I, I think part of it honestly is, um, the accomplishments and achievements of our kids at all ability levels. Um, doing things beyond just, you know, getting a diploma. Well, that's important. There are other opportunities for our kids, both, a- a- all students, not just, you know, high achievers or anything like that. So, I think part of it too, you look at our special education numbers have gone up in recent years because I think the word is out that the services and staff, here at Lakota, um, provide great services for our kids that have unique needs. I think that's part of it. Um, I think it's the accomplishments. Um, academically, it's also the accomplishments with, things around their four Es that our kids are involved with, which is what we want. And I just think that, um, you see the boom too in the housing market and people want to come, uh, to Westchester Liberty Township. So I think it's all connected. Um, and that's why enrollment keeps, keeps going up. It's awesome. Thank you.
Sure. I know from the community conversations that we've had, we heard a lot about the, um, not having to do, budget reductions or cuts and the financial stability really plays into that with families as well.
Anything else on the updates, neither?
Nope, I think, nope, I think that's it.
I did want to add, um, I know that at least four of us spent some time on the first couple of opening days. Mr. D and I went around, and visited some of our buildings and, um, had an opportunity to see our kids back in the buildings. It was terrific to see, big smiling faces and they looked really happy to be back. And, uh, and our administrators have done a terrific job with getting the schools ready as well as our custodians and all of our support staff. It was very, very nice to go and do that. Mr. D, did you want to add anything?
Yes, um, like she, like Ms., uh, O'Connor said, it was an experience. Uh, there are many of the buildings I've not been to. Um, when I visited those buildings, I was impressed. And it's a good thing to, to have access, to see what is going on and see how your, our kids are feeling. Uh, one of the things, the experience that I enjoyed was we got to one class, um, the kids were like, who are these? They were like, who are the strangers? You know? So the principal said, this are our board members. They are friends. So, let them also participate in what we're doing. So they were dancing and I found myself dancing with them, you know? So it is an experience that, uh, I always live with me. I enjoyed it. Yeah.
It was, it was quite something to see Mr. D being jazzy as the teacher said, okay, everybody be jazzy. And he did. And I wish I'd had my, camera ready at the moment. Could have held that over your head, Mr. D.
I did.
This is Casper. This is Schaefer.
Yeah, it was nice to be in buildings. Um, I got to sixteen buildings. I was tired. But it's nice to see, I love the staggered start. I know that sometimes it's a little hard for our parents for the childcare, but, uh, the, the kids love the staggered start, the, the teachers love the staggered start. It just gives them more of a one-on-one, kind of being able to do the classroom roles in kindergarten with a smaller group and getting them used to that. So I love the staggered start. The kids were excited, even at the high school, you know, was early, but they look, you know, they were still, into being in the hallways and it didn't seem crowded. We were west freshmen and we're like, is anybody here? Because there's always somebody in the hallway, west freshmen. But there was nobody in the hallway. Um, I think for me, the, one of the most exciting things to see, is the amount of alumni that are now teaching for us. Um, kids that graduated from East and West who are now teachers in our district. I know, I, I know personally of at least six kids that I have known since they were three and four, that are now teaching in our buildings and their enthusiasm and their excitement for being there was, really fun to see. So for me, that's a nice feather in our cap that they want to come back and teach for us where they went to school. So.
Agreed.
Um, Mr. Brown actually shared that they actually made special shirts for the kids who were Lakota alumni. And they actually, they had the, they said they were the farm team on them, which I thought was a fun thing to do to recognize those kids. Another thing Kelly and I saw at the East Freshman Building. Todd, last year's, um, school resource officer, who there's a new resource officer there, but he just wanted to make sure everything was going well, make sure the transition was good. And again, that passion, even though he's retired, that he wanted to be there to make sure everything was just as it should be. And I think, that is the level of care and love that our SROs have for our students and the schools that they serve. So I really appreciated that. Um, and then another thing we saw was at Y and Dot, they are in the process, they're going to start building a, um, a broadcast desk and they're working in partnership with the construction students at Butler Tech, to work on that. And then they're also going to work with the production students, on what they're going to do once they have the desk. So I thought that that was a great partnership and reaching across, schools to work together on that particular.
For their morning announcements.
Yep.
Terrific. Well, I'm just sorry you didn't see Mr. D dancing.
We missed that.
All right. Anything further, board? Mrs. Bodie, did you have anything?
Um, well, I think it was great to be there on the first day of school and I saw the excitement and the enthusiasm from the principals. I was able to, um, meet some new teachers. The rooms were amazing. The teachers are really taking pride in decorating their rooms and, and making them, you know, a place for their students. So I was excited to be a part of the first day of school and thank you to the principals at Liberty. I'm sorry, Hopewell Middle and Hopewell ESC for giving me a tour.
Thank you. Board will move on to board action items. Number six, A, the motion to amend policy ninety-one fifty, the school visitors' policy. And this is our second read. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Discussion board?
I would like to bring up, um, the fact that I received an email on, the sixteenth of August that, um, Isaac and Linda were going to represent, the board on behalf of the board and visit some buildings. However, according to the new updated policy, section two, um, line C, this was my voted on. And so I just want to make sure that as a board, if this is a policy you're passing, that you also, obey the policy. And then I would also like to see the communication on the other board members, who visited sixteen other schools. And I would like those, um, communications sent to me, please.
What communications? The ones that we sent to the principals?
Yes, to all of the principals.
Uh, why, why do you need my communication to principals? I don't.
Because that is the policy and I would like to make sure that you're following your own policy.
The policy says I have to submit to the principals and the superintendent. It does not say I have to submit to fellow board members. I, I.
Well, I would like a copy of that, please.
I didn't see anything where you said, I didn't see any communication from you that you were going to.
Oh, you can ask Matt for it.
Mrs. Bodie, let me suggest if you're looking for communications that, um, that's a public records request. And certainly you're welcome to any public records that are available. I'm not sure what, what the vote by the board was intended to be, so I'll be, can address that at some point if you'd like to.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh,
Just one moment. One moment, please. Let's do one at a time. Mrs. Bodie, would you like to finish?
Yes, I said it is, um, section two, number C, if a board is going to represent, a board, sorry, I need to pull that up. It says, "A visit by a board member on an official basis is for the purpose of attending an event as a, board representative appointed by the board." And in your email, you just stated that, um, you would be visiting some of the board, some of the buildings on behalf of the board. So I was wondering why we didn't take a vote on that.
Was that the email? I didn't see that. I, I know that I made a request that I have not visited the buildings before. Um, I would love to visit the buildings and I asked Ms. O'Connor if she can join me in doing that. Because since we came on board, I've been so busy with my job. Um, since school resumed, I wanted to have that experience. And that was why, the email went out to let, uh, the principal, principals know we're coming to their building. So, I think that was a personal request.
Anything else, board, on this policy? And I, I do want to point out, uh, just a couple of things that this policy does not do. The most important thing that it did do was to clarify unofficial versus official because that really was not clear within the policy. It does not anyway restrict board members from visiting buildings. That's still perfectly okay to do that. There's a process, including following the security protocols and guidelines. Excuse me. And I will say also, I think this is an important policy because there are no elected officials, that have completely unfettered access, that do not follow security protocols at any level that I'm aware of. So I think that that's important, that we have that in place. Again, it's not a new policy. It's merely a clarification. I think the policy was established in, two thousand thirteen. It's been in place for a while now. Any other discussion on the policy before we take a vote?
Yes. I just would like to say that I think as I spoke at the last board meeting, this policy change is absurd on its face. It literally is the abdication of the most important tool of the board has to ensure accountability. And if we are not here to ensure accountability with regard, to how educational mandates are carried out, then I question the need for a board at all. We have become nothing but a rubber stamp for the agendas put in place and maintained by the wealthy, powerful and politically, motivated teachers union and associated like-minded organizations that live off the district's coffers.
Anything further, Mrs. Bodie?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, board. Any further comments?
Yes.
Mr. D?
As I want to, um, make it clear to, in my understanding, no board member is restricted from visiting any school building. Nobody is restricting anybody. What we want to do is to make sure that we stick to our safety and security code. That way, the principal knows who is in the building. They are responsible for the security of the building. And as I went, I saw it. They're always on the radio. There's radio everywhere, you know? They're careful about security. So, my understanding is nobody is being restricted from visiting school building. You have to let the principal know. They own the building. They are running the building. So, any, any time any board member wants to go, like I did, we notify, and we came. And nobody stopped us. So that's my understanding. And I want to make sure it's clear to the community. Thank you.
I just want to add a thank you. This first week, every one of our board members attended the buildings, visited the buildings, and did it following the policy. And I appreciate that that happened. So, without further discussion, Mr. Zink, would you call the room?
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Thank you. We'll move to number seven, the treasurer action items. A, approve the board meeting minutes for August eighth to, two thousand twenty-two, and August eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. And B, approve the monthly financial reports for the month ending July twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. D. Mr. Zink? Comments?
Um, no, I don't have any at this time.
Anything on the financial reports?
No, not, not this time.
Okay. Board discussion, questions? Hearing none. Mr. Zink?
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. We'll move to eight, the superintendent action items. A, approve the personnel items and B, approve transportation routes, for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year, per Ohio Administrative Code thirty-three oh one point eighty-three point one three. Routs available for you at the Lakota Central Office, uh, should anyone be interested in those. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. D. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Mr. Miller? Discussion?
No, just pretty much self-explanatory. And the routes are, um, a requirement that we have to do and then on file.
Thank you, board. Any questions or comments?
I would like to be able to view the, um, routes, but I am unable to do so since I am out of town for a funeral. So can you explain some of those to me?
Sure. We work with Peterman on the routes to set up for our students, but also for the parochial schools, um, that we put together. Um, we work closely, obviously, with Peterman to get those scheduled so that, uh, we're maximizing, efficiency in terms of seats on, on, on the bus and also fuel efficiency and finding the quickest and, uh, most capable routes. We are, um, at a little bit of a disadvantage because of, uh, driver shortage, but we have some in the pipeline. We did have to cancel a route today. Um, but we have, um, pretty much set those routes up and, first couple of days of school, there's always a little bit of, um, juggling just because it's, people are new. People have, have, have updated addresses and let us know, things like that. And so it pretty much works itself out. We do get a handful of emails, concerned about, um, stops and length of time on the bus. And we forward those on to Peterman to work with those families. So, it's a, uh, massive undertaking, uh, to transport as many students as we do, not just in our sixty-three square miles, uh, but in schools, uh, that we also serve as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anything further, Mrs. Bodie?
No.
I also add, Linda, on transportation, I, it's come to mind or, come to my attention previously when asking, asking questions about the routes. They're very prescriptive in state law about where stops can be, how close they can be to the corner. Clear sight, turnarounds. And so many times when there's questions on that, it turns out that it's prescribed with how we have to, uh, handle a particular situation. So just be aware that it's very prescriptive.
It, it is. And we have, we use software for that too, and that helps. And, um, it's not an exact science and we make revisions to it every day.
Anything further? I have a motion and a second. No further discussion? Mr. Zink?
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. We'll move to number nine, public comment. As a reminder, we very much appreciate hearing from our community. I appreciate you attending our board meetings and we value an efficient and orderly meeting as well. Therefore, you've signed in and so we have your name here, but we would ask you to state it again when you come to the microphone for the purpose of the video recording. We also ask that you keep it to three minutes. You'll see up here when it turns yellow, that's your thirty seconds and it means wrap it up, please, with a complete stop by the time it turns red. Ask that you issue your statements and your comments to the presiding officer. Please do not address any board member individually. And no, to protect our employees' rights, the board does not hear complaints about specific employees in public session. If these guidelines are violated, it'll result first in a warning that you violated the rules and second, the forfeiture of a speaker's time. So again, we're looking forward to hearing from you. I will call names by three in a row, please. So please line up when you hear your names and we'll just keep moving through. We have thirty minutes and we'll hope to get as many people in as possible. We'll start off with Mrs. Cunningham, Mrs. Superiorian. I'm sorry, Samantha Cunningham, Mrs. Superiorian, and then Melinda Cunningham. Thank you. Go ahead, Samantha, whenever you're ready.
Can I go?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're good.
I'm Smith Cunningham and I am a resident of Liberty Township. I've gone to Lakota my whole life and I have tons of great experience over the years. I've had so many great teachers that have taught me more than just school stuff. They made me be a confident person through their support. Last school year, an intruder came into our building ignoring the rules. This was not a trusted adult in our community, not somebody that has ever volunteered in our school. It was somebody judging us. And she definitely judged me the day she took a picture of me, lied about it, and thinks she did nothing wrong. Safety protocols were not taken. Safety protocols were not taken seriously or followed that day. Why was the school not locked down while the intruder was in the building? The people running our school didn't care to share the facts about what happened that day when lies were told. Why did Lakota not let the parents know that a student photo was taken by the intruder? This is my junior year of high school and I sadly no longer go to Lakota because I do not feel safe within it. I do not trust the people that run our school after what had happened to me. Students need to be the priority. This includes both their mental and their physical safety. A school shooting happened only twenty days after this incident. Where in a very similar way, an intruder snuck into an open door and killed nineteen students and two teachers while wounding seventeen others. At East, the intruder was in the building for nine minutes, enough time to go all the way down Main Street and up the back stairwell before she took my picture. Why did nobody stop? This intruder even picked a day when the rest of the board and Mr. Miller were in a loop with the suit meeting and she decided to sneak into the school instead of attending the meeting. Have any other board members ever behaved like this? If you all cared about the students, you would be focusing on things like bullying, safety and suicide prevention. Real problems for my generation. Being accepted and feeling safe matters to us. Right now, you all seem so obsessed with gender identity and restricting information from students and parents, not giving us support or facts. Why has the school board become a place for Republican and Democratic politics instead of focusing on teachers and students? I left Lakota because the adults in charge have failed me. But I still worry about the students currently enrolled because the adults seem to forget what the students really need. School should be a bright spot in a student's day. Students need trusted adults that support and encourage them, not judge and scare them. School should be a place where students can be themselves with peers and learn and gain confidence. I have no confidence in you all as leaders. You are all wrapped up in your politics, not what is best for the students. And I can see this at sixteen years old. Do better. I would also like to thank Mr. Pentland, Mr. Vanderhorst, Ms. Naylor, Mr. Stewart, Ms. Holder, Ms. Haynes, Ms. Davis and Dr. Finkie for supporting me through my school and my life journey and helping me through my problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Mrs. Superiorian?
Hi, I don't have anything to say today.
Mrs. Cunningham, I'm sorry, one moment, please. Here, Marfeta will follow Jesse Cunningham and Leo Gray. Go ahead, please.
You ready? Good evening. I'm Melinda Cunningham, mother of that brave little girl that I'm so super proud of. I'm here because she wanted to talk tonight mainly because she wanted to speak to the district about transparency. We did. Why did the school not make parents aware of Ms. Bodie's taking a photograph of my daughter to set the record straight? That would be, would have been transparent. Instead, no one publicly stood up and said anything. It was hidden. Why? I have served in your district as a volunteer, a leader for many, many years. I loved Lakota and my community before all this happened. Never in my wildest dreams would I think the district would lack integrity and try to sweep something that happened to my child under the rug in time with the time she needed you the most. I withdrew Samantha the first day of school at Lakota. I just cannot trust that you would do the right thing at this point as a board because it has not been controlled by the board. The board is running rampant. Your teachers have given my children a great education. I'm happy to admit those things. Then, to further the victimizing of my child, we had a man use a public blog to glorify Ms. Bodie's actions, further victimizing my daughter, referring to her as a common streetwalker. The school did nothing to mend my child and this caused my gut-wrenching disappointment to our family once again. I want to be very clear to the board, parents and community members that I have filed a civil rights violation because my child was sexualized that day in your district, in your building. I have also filed a FERPA charge because pictures of my child were taken by Ms. Bodie. Personal records, I have never given Lakota's local school district permission for a board member to document my child or her personal records. In closing, I have a few requests to help our daughter and our family move forward from here. I need my daughter's release code so I can get her GED immediately. I need all financial liabilities from the neglect from your district. This includes lawyer fees, hospital fees, doctor fees, continued therapy and continued education. I will be following up with the list that incurred of all my expenses and ongoing that this is not going to stop. Bodie's actions have, lack of accountability have caused stress and permanently changed the course of my child's future. No prom, no graduation and no trust from the administration.
Mrs. Cunningham, I'm sorry, I have to ask you to wrap up, please. Thank you. Mrs. Marfeta, Jesse Cunningham, Mr. Gray and Krista Hobie will follow. Is Mrs. Marfeta here? Samantha, thank you for speaking to us. Mr. Gray? I'm sorry, Mrs. Cunningham, Jesse Cunningham. Okay. I'm ready, sir.
Jesse Cunningham, I have three kids, two within this Lakota School District. During the Corinthian night, I had an issue with, when he's walking around, there were some signs on some of the teachers' doors. Someone on the bulletin boards, you said to bring up, you guys all said to bring up any kind of issues I find out. And it says that it's a safety zone. And above that safety zone is a rainbow. And I don't know what that means. I don't know what's pushing, but this is the kind of agenda that we're wanting out of our schools. We've already heard speakers speak the dangers of this and I don't want anything sexual to talk to my kids. It's something I try to bring up in the right ways. And I'm fine with it in schools and for them to have their memberships, but I don't want the teacher themselves that they're enrolled in to have a choice to go through and be put on that by their teachers. Also seen some problems with the kids being in school with the teachers not being able to give their kids a proper to do anything for the kids that are misbehaving. It's like the teacher's hands are tied. The teachers can be attacked and they can't do a thing. I feel like it's a problem with them starting to bully the teachers. My kids get bullied in school. It's nothing I don't already inspect that happens in schools, but this, they're start, they try to make it sound like it's a racial thing when I hear speakers come up here. It's throughout the school. It happens. I understand, but it's more than ever. And I see it amongst just my kids, some of my kids' best friends just bullied nonstop. Their best friends bullied each other. I just, I want this division to stop in our school. I want the politics out of our school, like everybody's saying. I want it to be clean math, English and, and just the arithmetic, nothing more. And these safety zones, I feel like is not being transparent. It's saying that they can go to the teacher and the teacher can say whatever they want to the child without anybody being around. That's what a safety zone, that's what's spelling out for me. That's what the counselors are for. If they want to go see a counselor, that's fine, but that's not the teacher's job. The teachers are not counselors. I'm, I'm for myself. Bodie, Bodie broke some rules. I'm not for breaking rules, but she has a the rules she broke is nothing that causes all this that's happening right now. This is a, this feel like this is just a big political show in which she's under full attack, just like everybody else is in the government right now.
So I need to ask you to wrap up, please.
I'm also not for CRTV and taught in our schools. And I'm sure you've already heard all the reasons. And that's it. Thank you for your time. And I chose Lakota because I like the school district. I know I have nothing but negativity to say. It's just stuff I want gotten rid of.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gray will be up next. Krista Hobie, Joe Zakowski and Betty Dawsonback. Mr. Gray, can you tip that? Thank you.
I'm Leo Gray and I'm in Liberty Township, the school system here in Lakota. I want to commend Matt Miller, the superintendent. He came on board in two thousand seventeen. A lot of good things have happened at Lakota. He just won a nice award and, and leading the students into a program that will be very beneficial in the near future. We do have a problem that we've talked about many, many times and that's the diversity program here in Lakota. And I have here the Lakota mission statement that I want you to take a look at for just a couple of minutes.
Mr. Gray, would you direct that to the board, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
I've got to show both sides. You'll see the other side when I get this done.
Okay.
Okay. Elton Card was hired in two thousand and eighteen and he is one of the nicest people that I have ever talked to on the telephone, very polite. And this goes along with most of the people that I've talked to at Lakota schools. They are very extremely polite. But he was put into a diversity job that has been about three years going and it's time, we've realized it's time to get rid of this program. It is called division. And we, I remember when I was, had kids in school, but I'm eighty-six, so it does go back a ways. We had the the new math at that time. And my girls went to the school. It took them two years to recover from that experiment. This experiment has been three years in the making and it's time to stop the diversion that we have. We need to go forward and continue with the education of our students in math, English, science, history, this type of thing. This is where schools are for. The parents are to do the others. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mrs. Hobie is up next. This is Zakowski, this is Dawsonback and then Randy Patrick.
All right. I'm Krista Hobie, Westchester resident, Lakota East ninety-eight grad. First off, I want to try to do some positive. I do understand there's I congratulate the young lady for coming up in here and, and being a sixteen-year-old and sitting here. So I want to do some positiveness here. I want to say first off, thanks to the staff and administrators across the district for a successful start to our school year. The kids were welcomed back with care and empathy. I appreciate the increased commitment to the safety, protection and academic focus of our students, including my two daughters in our amazing public school system. I look forward to the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year being focused on our children and their continued social, emotional learning needed in our world today through supporting diversity, equity and inclusion to all children, including those of unique needs. Thank you to our Hope squads, their advisors, thanks to our coaches, our band directors and teachers that are there to help support our children day in and day out in those safe spaces. As an alumni and a mom, this is a fine public school system and I'm proud of our district's hard work and continued excellence. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Mrs. Zakowski, this is Dawsonback, Mr. Patrick and then Mr. Horton.
Hello, my name is Jerry Zakowski and I'm from Westchester. I am not a graduate of Lakota. I am, and I am also not here part as a, as an organized group pushing for an agenda, but as a patriot, very concerned about the God-given rights of the family, the founding, which is the foundation of all societies and for our country, which can be lost in one generation of children without an understanding of the natural law. One aspect of this natural law is dealing with family privacy. And I have a petition here that I would like to pass. May I pass it out?
Would you like to go ahead and finish speaking first? So you don't lose your place?
We'll pass them all out for you so you can go back to the podium. Sure. Go ahead. They all the same? They'll pass it on here.
Thank you.
This is a taxpayer's petition to protect student and family privacy. It's just one aspect of protecting families. It's submitted to the Lakota School Board on August twenty-second, two thousand two. Whereas it appears that our citizens are being managed in an ever-increasing Chinese-like extent, extensive surveillance net that puts our children and our families at risk. And whereas privacy rights have been subtly increasingly encroached upon by our own government agencies in so many aspects of our lives. And whereas children are easily manipulated to unwittingly reveal aspects of their lives and the lives of their family without the maturity of discernment. And so be it resolved that no survey of any kind, whether oral, written or acted out in the classroom or in any other forum over and above the normal school application form may be requested or demanded of any student by any teacher or person in authority in the school. And be it resolved that the parents of a student must receive a copy of any intended survey scheduled to be administered at least two weeks prior to the intended distribution date. And furthermore, be it resolved that parents must have given their permission to opt in for the student to take it. Therefore, I urge the Lakota Superintendent and School Board members to adjust their policy to protect the rights of each student and family under their care because this is so critical.
Ma'am, I have to ask you to wrap up. I have to ask you to wrap up. Your time's up.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is Dawsonback is up. Mr. Patrick, Mr. Horton and Mrs. Grayler.
Hi, I'm Betty Dawsonback. I guess I really should start to say that I do appreciate all the work that every member of the board does, whether I agree with a lot of it or not. But I have to say, I'm here to say I'm disappointed that the visitor policy as written was approved. I realize that any request a board member may have in regards to the education of our children must go through the superintendent. That is all well and good, but I also know that in the best interest of children, it is always good to check and verify. I see no harm in a school board member being allowed to visit a school in a non-intrusive way. According to the policy, I quote, during school hours, visitors to any school building shall first report to the school office and follow building signing procedures, signage indicating this requirement will be posted conspicuously. Yet for a school board member, it specifically states, quote, "An individual board member makes appropriate arrangements with the principal and or superintendent by A, providing advance written or verbal notice to the principal or superintendent of the desire for the visit. B, providing an explanation of the purpose, scope" b) providing an explanation of the purpose, scope, and duration of the visit; c) scheduling a mutually agreed-upon time for the visit. If the school board member is considered the same as a regular visitor, can you explain to me why there are different rules for the board member to follow? After all, the person is being considered the same as a parent or a visitor. Have you set, have you not set restrictions over and above what is called for? Make up your minds. Is a school board member considered an individual and allowed to follow the normal procedures? Or is this your way to prevent certain individuals from visiting a school, a district of visitation rules? It can't have it both ways."
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dawsonback. Mr. Patrick? Mr. Horton, Mrs. Greenler. And I apologize, I cannot read the first name, the last name's Bookman. Mr. Patrick?
I'm Randy Patrick. The subject of my comments will be the culture war that is raging all over America. The purpose of these comments is to provide suggestions for how the district can continue to focus on academic excellence during this war. America is caught up in a major culture war that extends from sea to the shining sea. Our news media reports a steady stream of vitriol in our politics, institutions, and our school board meetings. This war features two antithetical worldviews for which reconciliation of those on opposite sides is highly unlikely. For purpose of my comments, these will be referred to as the traditional modelist slash modelist worldview and a critical social justice worldview. My comments address only two key components of these two worldviews that are relevant to K through 12 education, meritocracy and parental involvement. In the traditional slash modelist view, meritocracy is the preferred way in which people should be chosen and moved into positions of success, power, and influence on the basis of their demonstrated abilities and merit. Parental engagement and policy formation and implementation is welcomed by board, boards of education because family is highly valued. In contrast, the social justice, critical social justice worldview sees these two components as follows. Meritocracy is deemed racist and should be replaced or tempered with means to achieve diversity and equity goals and hiring practices and performance assessments. Parental input on school board decisions should be minimized or eliminated because family is not highly valued, plus teachers and school board administrators are deemed more knowledgeable about pedagogy. We must not let this culture interfere with our fulfillment of the three fundamental or principal goals of educating our kids. One, prepare them for, to have a successful career. Two, teach them to become good citizens. Three, enrich each student's life. I make the following suggestions to, to this end. One, understand the culture war and how it is impacting political, our public education. We cannot solve problems we don't understand. Two, evaluate which Ohio SEL standard should be implemented in the district and how to prevent the infusion of critical theory and ideology to require, require student opt-in rather than opt-out documentation for involvement. Do not include teacher involvement as counselors as part of the program. Restrict student data collection to absolute minimum and, and clearly identify the public meetings, in public meetings, what student data may be collected and how it will be managed. Three, evaluate the cost effectiveness of the Dakota Outreach Diversity and Inclusion Department in improving the relationship cohesionness of Lakota's diverse population. Four, to the extent allowed by applicable legal requirements, replace government programs to mitigate disparities with programs based on use of volunteers such as mentors, tutors, and et cetera. Five, stop assuming the parents.
Sorry, could you wrap up, please? Thank you, sir. And you are welcome to send that to the board. Mr. Horton? I'm sorry.
It should pass.
Mrs. Greenler, thank you for printing your name. I appreciate that.
It was a chore, but I did it. Okay, I have a question for the school board tonight.
Please state your name, please.
I'm sorry, Penelope Greenler, Westchester. I have a question for the school board members tonight. Why are you here? Are you here to answer the Republican dog whistle, which is about winning seats in the election and nothing to do with our children and their education? Money has been poured into the fight to politicize school board agendas only to get votes, but we are about education, not repressive politics. CRT is not Rainbow's diversity, equity, or inclusion. CRT cannot be taught. Are you here to stoke the CRT lies and disinformation in order to dismantle public education, or at least further by lacking, the lack of funding while you serve on publicly funded school boards? You got voted to Lakota School Board to serve our children, not just the chosen ones you want to send to discriminatory, discriminatory private schools, but all our public school children. Are you here to push anti-CRT lie at Lakota, whether vocally or surreptitiously? Are you here to enact the politics? Or are you here to focus on the education of all our Lakota public school children? It's time to stop wasting our board's energy and time on something that doesn't even exist. Focus on maintaining the high-quality education that my children and board members graduates received. Nothing has changed since then, just Republican political propaganda. So as a parent and taxpayer, I think it's time you cease and desist with the inflammatory lies intended to destroy our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Greenler. Mr. or Mrs. Bookman? Jessica Williams? Linda Nix follows, and Kate Brettasdey.
Hi, I'm Jessica Williams, and I just wanted to do a shout out. Can I do a positive thing about the teachers and say their names?
Please.
Positive, please? Okay. Mr. Robinson and Ms. Berwinkle at Liberty Junior really helped my daughter a lot. Her schedule got kind of mixed up and messed up, and they literally pulled her into the office, handed her Tambo, the therapy dog to pet, and helped her figure it out and showed us, really just showed us like how they have to work through their schedules to show us like all of the options and really tried super hard to get the schedule to be exactly what she wanted. In the end, they still couldn't quite get it to work, but I really, really appreciate all the effort and time they put into that, being like the first day of open house, and just, they really tried. I did want to say one little thing about class sizes, if there's only 30 lockers in a classroom, don't put 31 kids in there. At the, as a person at the end of the alphabet, my kid ends up with a milk crate at the ends of the lockers and is told, you get a special spot. It's not special, okay? It's, everyone else has a locker, and he has a crate. So it was resolved. Shout out to the Van Gordon School for figuring that out for him, but just, if we could try to avoid that, that would be great, because that was a pretty rough, like, first day for him. And my kid at Y and Dot, first grade, first time at Y and Dot, because he did half-day kindergarten last year at Liberty Junior, or Liberty Early, first, first grader at Y and Dot, and he's doing fantastic and coming home and telling us how much he loves school. So it's a great start to the year. Thank you, you guys. Matt Miller, you're doing an amazing job. Thank you.
Good to hear, thank you. Mrs. Nix? Mrs. Nix and Mrs. Brettasdey, I'm going to ask if you could please email your comments to the board, we're at the end of our public comment section. Thank you. Board, we'll move on to ten, scheduling. We had several changes coming up here, so we're going to just have a discussion about the best way to handle those changes. So the first piece, our committee meetings coming up on September 1. Mr. Miller, my understanding is there is not the need?
Sorry.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Zink. My understanding is there is not a need for our committee meetings to meet on the first, is that accurate?
That's correct. I mean, Mr. Vogel was taking care of policy, we just had community engagement, and we just had a safety update this last, like, two weeks ago, less than two weeks ago, I think. Doesn't feel like it'd be worth being practical for that.
Okay. Everyone fine with that? Okay. We'll move on to the September 5th, would normally be our facilities committee meeting. It is, however, Labor Day and the long weekend, so we would not normally schedule on a holiday.
Labor Day, huh?
It's Labor Day. The suggestion has been to move it in front of the September 12th board meeting?
I would like to have, can I, sorry, am I interrupting?
Just a moment, please.
Okay, thank you.
Your pleasure. The suggestion's been made to move that from Labor Day to September 12th in front of the board meeting.
I would like to, I would like to suggest moving it to a Tuesday, as I've stated multiple times, stacking facilities meeting on top of a board meeting that rap, that runs rather long. This is really challenging for my situation, so I would like to be able to create shorter board meetings if possible and allow that to be on a, on a second, on another day.
So we have two alternatives for it. The administration has suggested, and Mrs. Casper suggested moving it to the 12th. Mrs. Boddy would like to look at, I mean, that's the 6th, if we're looking at Tuesday. So Board, what's your pleasure? Mr. Miller, Mr. Zink, terms of availability?
I don't have anything else on the 6th.
Mr. Zink?
Look at my schedule on the 6th.
Board?
The sergeant would be a good one to ask, too.
They say we need to check with Chris to see. What, oh, sorry, Chris, see, it is availability, it's if we move it. I just personally would rather have one meeting than two, just because I have a lot of other commitments as well.
On the 12th.
Yeah, but not going to die on my sword, Board.
Mrs. Schaefer?
I would agree. I mean, for me, it works better when they're combined, but if that is not possible, then I will try to accommodate the 6th.
Mr.?
Doesn't matter to me. I don't have any conflict, so it doesn't matter to me. Whatever we agree on, I'm, I'm good.
I can make anything work, whatever you, whatever you guys choose.
Is Mr. Bissarge here?
He back there a little.
Maybe downstairs. There he is. Good, he's okay.
All right, so for this month, we're going to move facilities to Tuesday, if that works for everyone, 6 o'clock.
Thank you.
And our final, our final meeting is September 26th, which would be a work session for the board. I have received indications that that's a conflict for several people. So let me ask our administrators. I know that we've got some financials coming up, is there a problem to do those on the 12th, to have that done in time?
Yeah, we're working on the Treasures Office side to get the permanent appropriations for the 12th meeting. I'm actually on vacation out of the country the week prior, so I would have to miss the agenda setting if we did have one on the 26th. I'll be back that Saturday, so I will be back in, in town on the 26th, but I'd be out the week prior.
Okay. Mr. Miller, conflicts on the 26th?
It's not a great day, I'm supposed to be in Columbus that day and the next day. So it's a little bit difficult, I mean, it's, it's a work session, so we can always cancel and reschedule if we need, if need be. Just my thoughts.
I do have a conflict on that date. Mrs. Schaefer?
I will be flying back into town that day, so I did have some concern, given the current state of our airline industry, if I would make it back, but my goal was to be back. But again, I do have concern, just, we all know what's happening with canceled flights and such, so I was trying to pick an earlier flight, so if one would be canceled, I would still have time to get a later one, but I can't guarantee it, given that I'm traveling that day.
Mrs. Casper?
I have nowhere to go and nothing to do.
It'd be me, so sad for you.
Isaac Darby down charge.
No, I, I don't, yeah, if we want to reschedule, then, yeah.
It'd be all right with that.
I will not be flying.
I don't even know what to say to you, seriously. Mr. Adie?
So far, I don't have anything right now. I can go with the flow, because it's like, a lot of people have conflicts. If we have to move it, I'm fine, but I'm available.
Okay, Mrs. Boddy?
Are we discussing the 26th still?
Yes.
I have no conflicts.
So Board, I've heard a suggestion to cancel unless we need to determinately redate that we have a issues that we have to address.
So at this, at this point, we're going to cancel, and if there's something comes up, we're just going to find an alternative date, is that correct?
Yes. So Board, all right, without all right. All right, without further discussion on that, Board, I'm going to ask for adjournment and a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Adie, thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Any discussion? Mr. Zink?
Mr. Adie?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening.